Hundred for the snow equipment, so you're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand. For for a dump truck, so. Currently, everything that we've got is freight liners except for two stirrings that we're looking at replacing. Except this is, this is only one, they've only got an allocation for one truck, one truck, not two.
But just one of those for wings hitting the road.
One of those stirrings will probably get retired, the box will come off of it, we'll put a flatbed on it and turn it into a water truck. For these grading projects that we're doing. It'd be reduced miles on the machine.
You want trade it in or sell it, you just repurpose it.
Right, we just repurpose it.
The other side of the having a Mac is if you did a Mac. You have the access to Ford Dodge with the location of.
Ford Dodge would do the servicing.
Running it clear over to.
Uh, over by Waterloo where Don's truck or uh. Fair, yeah, you got Fairbank or you've got Truck Centers up in Clear Lake. Would be the two freight liner locations.
Well, you, we've had a lot of discussion on this, as you've been working on this for it seems an interminable amount of time, it's a shortage of anything. But the Mac hopefully requires more service, if it does, it's cool. Yeah, we'll promise the longevity and so on and so forth.
And it looks like the price is not quite as high as you were talking earlier.
No, uh, what I was expecting was uh roughly one fifty for the truck. One fifty for the snow equipment, like I said, talking to highway truck, they brought up a. A freight liner that they finished for Hancock County on Friday. And just briefly talking with him, all of the snow equipment that he put on that truck was roughly hundred and twenty five thousand. But it had a belly blade on it, it had three cameras on the thing, I mean, it was all the bells and whistles. So I'm just assuming we'd be somewhere around a hundred. If we drop a few of those options off. So.
Now, a question on snow equipment. So, you know, you're talking about the older truck, you're making for water or flatbed or whatever, which is fine, but. So if you have an older truck, do they all have snow equipment, a lot of team them each and every truck?
Each and every truck.
The one that say you're retiring or trading in or getting rid of, what happens to that snow equipment?
Uh, for the most part, we keep it as replacement items. Uh, right now, I've got a truck that the sander is basically rusting and rotting out. That we're gonna be replacing the sander with one of these trucks. Uh, the front plow and the wing would be available for when we have damage sustained to any of them.
Okay, so it becomes bare parts. Because you talk about what you thought a hundred thousand, that's new equipment. And the old truck, whatever, the snow truck may be, is that general operating procedure?
Typically, we trade the truck and plow and everything off.
This one you would.
But this one, we're keeping the truck for a water truck, we'd keep all of the snow equipment. For additional parts.
When we do that work, like on the sander, that's all in-house. We do our own welding and stuff like that, so. Good, I assume that.
Well, I would say, given all of the, the extended discussion and Ben's due diligence and trying to find a truck. I'm making motion to move forward with that truck. Um, application to get one at least.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only, that's all they've got for.
We're gonna be so far.
We're gonna be back, kick back again.
Will we kick back the waiting for availability of.
So I've been, everything we know. I've got to make the motion to proceed with the one Mac truck.
Do we have a motion a second, all those in favor? Okay, unanimous carries.
By them.
Alright, thank you. The last item that I've got on the agenda is discussion on possible county easement. In the fourteen hundred mile of Texas Avenue near Hardy uh for Paul Anderson. Last week. Paul and his wife came in and talked to Dave in the office about us moving snow. Uh, to their mailbox, which talking to. Uh, retired operators where he had moved snow for roughly twenty five years. Because he was under the assumption that where the mailbox was at is where the right of way ended. We got on Beacon, started looking at Beacon compared to where we're turning around now, and that is actually where. The county's right of way ends. Coming up here, going to the courthouse, looking through old records, I've given you guys a detailed history of everything with regards to the road. The assessor's office has a very old undated map. Uh, which shows a forty foot easement from the half mile line north to the quarter quarter line. Which is the three quarter mile north line. Um, but it's only on the east side, and this is prior to the county acquiring uh right of way. For that quarter mile section, uh in nineteen thirty eight. Uh, Grace Notestein petitioned the county to establish a sixty six foot highway. Uh, along the west side of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter, section twenty nine. Um, I believe she was the resident of the acreage at that time. Uh, the county did establish a sixty six foot road from the half mile line to the three quarter line. Which is where the private lane began. Further detailed records, basically how it was recorded, there was an error in the recorder's office dating back. In nineteen thirty eight, talking to Diane. Uh, she says that we need to have John sign an affidavit so that she can legally change. The reporter's description, which currently says the northeast of the northeast of section twenty nine instead of the. Southeast of the northeast of twenty nine, so.
So it has to be done by a lawyer.
So that part has to be done by a lawyer.
Make that correction.
Right. Um, at the time that Paul and his wife were in the office talking with me. Looking at Beacon, it looked like the county had easement on the west side. Of this stretch of road up to approximately where their mailbox was at. After looking through the courthouse records, that's an error. It's due to the typo in the recorder's office. Uh, so this affidavit would clear up the issue on Beacon. Yeah, I, I guess, long story short, the, the county did it for twenty five, thirty years. Moving snow all the way up to the, to the mailbox, but now that we know that the county's right of way doesn't go. Beyond where we're clearing now, I can't see us moving snow on private property. If we did that, we'd be opening up can worms where everybody that lives out in the country would want us to be plowing their lane.
Now, preferable, everybody dislikes to stick to the roads and people doing that good job.
I, I did send copies of all of this to Paul and his wife. And I believe you guys have copies of everything, I, I know they had a, a survey done last year on the acreage. And e- even on the, the survey, it says the road easement ends at the quarter quarter line.
And that survey is probably what brought all this to light?
Uh, us stopping moving snow up to the mailbox is what kind of brought all this up, that's what brought. Paul and his wife into the office wanting to know why we had stopped. Um, and the further we dug into it, I guess.
The reason you stopped was because of the survey, because you realized that you didn't have.
The reas- the reason we stopped is the guy saw on Beacon that the county didn't have easement. Up the lane.
I was just kinda wondering what is, what started this whole ball rolling?
If you're out there, you can clearly see where it switches from a twenty two foot gravel road to about a ten foot wide lane. And that's where the guys would turn around. Uh, they didn't grade up the road in the summertime. And just here this year, they stopped moving snow up the lane. Uh, I do know last year we got stuck on the acreage trying to move snow. And got close to one of the buildings at the north end. Yeah, I don't see an advantage for the county to continue.
I was kinda wondering what, what brought this all up.
So do we need a, is there a motion or are we just gonna have John put this thing in motion and so that?
Actually, what first brought this up wasn't the first time we came to the farm, well, let me start over. I grew up on this farm at the end of this dead end road, so, you know, so, and actually, they've been plowing this snow. For over sixty years, because I grew up there and I knew when this, you know, that it was over sixty years they've been plowing this. And so we went first twice to the engineer's office, the first time is we went to the farm and they hadn't gone up the road at all. They, uh, not even at the, the fifteen hundred, they, they didn't plow any of it. So we talked to the assistant engineer and he pretty much said, well, there's new help, you know. And that they probably didn't know they had to plow that road because the road south of this is a no snow removal road, so they must probably just figured that. Was this all. The second time we came, you know, we noticed that they didn't plow up to the mailbox, which I got a. Uh, a picture here that shows what the four hundred feet that we're talking about. Yeah, there's two red lines on there, the one is where the easement ends. The, the top line, and then the, the second line is where, uh, the mailbox or the, uh. Where we, where they've been plowing to. So we're really requesting. That, uh, that, uh. They continue to plow it as they have for the last sixty plus years because. I'm sixty seven and I lived on that farm and farmed that farm afterwards. Uh, for sixty some years, and it's probably was plowed even before that, the easement that he's talking about, which I'm not gonna contest. On the west side, that they said, that he says there's probably a typo, and I'm not gonna contest that because one. It's not on our property, it's a west of our property, and that, uh. And, uh, that doesn't really affect what, what I'm requesting. So the second time we went to the, and talked to Mr. Lutes. You know, he told us that, well, the county can't have their prop, their equipment on private property. Well, what was ironic about that, when we left the, the engineer's office and we went out to the farm. That we saw that the, uh, county had, we went by one of our fields, and the county had been in there, uh. Grading a bank of, sit my three banks to, uh, for stole fence and stuff, so. To tell me that you can't be on private property and then finding out a half hour later. That they've been on private property and, uh, and plowing this without my knowledge, and, uh. I'm not saying that's not a, a good thing to plow this snowbank, because it's a lot easier and probably more effective than. Putting in all that snow fence. But it does have a little negative for the farmer in the spring, you know, you're packing ground, packing snow. It melts slower, you know, when the spa comes and stuff, it can have a, but it's got a benefit. You know, for keeping the snow off the roads, which is a plus. So I mean, you know, there's a little give and take, you know, uh, I would say the county can, you know. Go in private property and, 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 you know, bake these snowbanks and stuff, and, uh, so. So what we're really requesting is this ten foot drive. Uh, is all on our property, it isn't on the county's property, it's not when they correct that easement. That's eighty four years old, uh, you know, that won't affect that drive and anything, but. You know, it's kinda like requesting to be grandfathered in, I mean, if they've been doing it for. Sixty plus years and to stop because, you know, that, uh. They decided that, you know, that, uh.
We stopped it as we realized now that it's not our right.
Okay, now, that, that is not there right away. And I couldn't find records that it was, I went through the recorder's records and, and I do appreciate now that some of that's online. Uh, the images, you can't, it's not digitalized, so you can't. You have to look at the image, you can't do any search except for alphabet, but, uh, but I looked through ten years of. Uh, easements and, and, and agreements, which is also in there, uh, that, uh, but anyway. It'll affect both of us, I mean, one, it'll affect us that the snow gets filed up to our house, which our son lives there. And stuff right now, but, uh, two. Uh, there's really no place to turn your equipment around, uh, there's no driveway where the easement stops. Now, uh, so, it, that's not my problem. Uh, if you don't approve this, I guess you can back up. And, uh, and then back back to get the other side, but if you don't approve, and I'm not wanting to be a stick about this, but. It, uh, you know, it benefits both of us, you can drive, you can. Uh, turn around in the first driveway that, to the house there, if you plow it, so.
I'm only talking about four hundred feet. Which if it's blown full, we can't get in, nobody would be able to get in really. You'd have to walk four hundred feet, even if it's a fire truck or something, I mean, it can, it can really blow full. And our son is handicapped due to his back and stuck in Iraq, and so that makes it, he can't blow it. So we're talking, we have to go out and blow it, well, if you're gonna walk a hun- four hundred feet to get up to the farmhouse to be able to get out of. Uh, tractor to blow it out, that's a problem.
So, so it's, it's a request, and actually, I would be willing to have an agreement, which can also be recorded. That we don't want it, we don't need to have it graded, this is just snow removal. Uh, and like I said, for sixty, seventy years, it's been done. Uh, well, but, uh, but to tell me you can't be on private property, uh, that, that doesn't. That, you know, how I felt when I drove to the farm after being in the meeting there with them that saw that they had been. On my property, uh, pushing stone, so.
Well, in reference to that, anytime, correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, when we go make snow fence with snow. Don't we call and visit with the people that own it? Because we have certain people that don't want our equipment out on their property packing and whatever.
On the east side of the road, out or out in the field on the east side.
No, this is different farm.
It's a different farm.
I'll talk to Kenny, the way the guys know, the, the way they're supposed to do it is get missionary property owners.
And I guess my other thoughts are, they're, they're turning around down there at the four hundred foot mark.
No, actually, they can't, because there's no driveway, they have to come up about to four hun- well, probably the three eighty mark, cause there's a ditch. Uh, with no drive.
Well, that's what I was getting to, I don't want somebody to tip something over and when we're out there, but I. Uh, I can understand your guys' dilemma too, so.
And he said that if we came to the supervisors and they approved it, he would start following it the next day. That's why we're really here, why we came to the supervisor.
Oh, it just means, uh, he is here, that would be Ben.
At the time that I said that, I thought we had easement on the west side, I said. If we get permanent easement from you guys on the east side somewhere to a road. Where they would lose. Four tenths of the, four tenths of an acre of that farm, we can continue moving snow. Just like the county got back in nineteen thirty eight, they got a quarter of a mile section on both sides of the road. This would be a four hundred and ten foot strip on both sides of the road. I don't see Paul Larson giving up four hundred and ten feet. That doesn't benefit him, and honestly, four hundred feet doesn't benefit us.
Uh, it's two rods, actually.
Two rods is only thirty three.
Pete, yeah, that's what the, that comes up on the east side to that point is two rods. Yeah, not forty feet or.
No, so originally, it was, it was a forty foot easement. That ran that length of the road before the county had, it was, it was an easement for that property owner to get to the county road at the half mile. And that got switched to sixty six foot easement in nineteen thirty eight.
Uh, I got the easement with me and it's, it's two rods.
Thirty three feet on the east side, thirty three feet on the west.
Yes. From the center of the.
So, yeah, this whole thing is quite an interesting story, most starts with the historical part of it. That, that essentially was incorrect from, from history.
Yeah, it's a typo, basically, and it moves it, actually on the west side, it moved it. Back a quarter mile.
And Ben's professional engineering, looking out for the county protocol opinion. If you had an easement. Sixty six feet, if I'm getting it right.
It was, it was still a road.
And then actual easement and recorded it as an easement, then you would continue to go this distance, right? But there is no easement for what you say four hundred feet, is that what I'm gathering? I need a better pictorial diagram of this, cause, but at any rate. That was your thought process, get an actual permanent easement recorded.
It's, yeah, beyond the quarter quarter line, it's right, right away, right property.
Get the historical, some hundreds of feet that Ben being plowed. To an actual technical easement. So I guess what you both say.
I would be not objecting to an easement, I didn't think you have to go to all that, I thought agreement, but in it, I see agreements recorded. We got agreements on our farm for private people to bring, uh, hook on to our tiles, I mean, there's agreements, you know, which is. By me.
But we go either way.
We go either way, yeah.
I was trying to get the whole straight story, and I mean, like I said, Ben does very good due diligence on things, you know, correctly. That easement is more.
The easement would make it down the right away.
Because then we don't have the problem down the road with other properties. Where people say, geez, I got a real long lane, I'd like to plow up to my house.
Make that easement there's.
Then there's no gray area. Cause it's legitimate.
It was on the Webster County side and.
You were not, that, that didn't work too good, did it?
No, and they stopped. And I mean, where it was in, that was it, they did not, they would turn around in our door yard, but they did not.
They said they didn't have an easement.
So we had to clean it all, to, to where that easement stopped, I mean, yeah.
I might mention with the survey, they did find the pins for the half mile pin in the. In the top of the section pin, and there's pins, actually, the forty feet from the center. The property line, there is pins in the field, actually farm ground. I don't know, if we got this map or not, this is from the assessments. Uh, we would only lose like, well, hardly nothing for farm ground, because it's grass lane now. It's all grass. It's flat, there's no ditch.
Yeah.
For most of it, except for about the three eighty, then, uh, there, that southers ditch on both sides, so that keeps them from. Turning around.
But if we got easement, there would be dish.
Okay, that would be great.
We would create. You guys did, then it would look like a difficult road section.
That would raise it up and.
Make it better, yeah.
To me, that looks like the answer to our situation. I mean, we're never always out there looking to create more roads, but people do have to have access to their property of the decent road, like you say, for fire trucks or whatever. And.
But, um, how's that different from somebody getting into Dean's acreage or my acreage?
Well, yours is in Webster County, so we're not.
From my garage or from my house out to the road.
Where does John turn around now?
Right now, we, we turn around down at the south end, maybe it's three, maybe it's thirty feet in. I don't know, but the ditch is level four, is where they turn around.
I mean, I could tell that, you know, if they wanted to put in two farm drives at their, at the end of the, uh. Easement, you know, that was be an option, but right now, they'd have to back up. At least a quarter mile to the first driveway, and then back back to get to grade the other side of the road. So, I mean, so. But if you did put a driveway in, I prefer it down the east side, because that's where, uh, the family farm is, but, um.
But what I'm hearing is that you're turning around in the middle of the road, right?
Well, you turn around on our property, actually.
We didn't build driveways, that's what we did, but the one, we built a driveway to turn around.
Do we need to build a driveway there for him to turn around safely? Or would it be worth just pushing it right on up to the mailbox and turning around in their lane? I know a couple other places in the county that were going up on private property turn around.
That were going up on private property turning around, I'd like a list of them. My opinion, we need to stop. I mean, if we run into one of the old buildings or something like that, who's responsible? You shouldn't be.
Right. We don't want that extra liability. They usually turned in the driveway and that's not near the building, the building.
Oh, they did stuff last year, a lot of buildings.
Well.
I don't know, they went too far, but I mean, they went way past. Well, that's what I understand, the typo made us think that we had easement. On the west, on the west side, looking at that map, and technically we didn't. So the road stops there.
The road stops down at the quarter border line.
They got, so I mean, if you look at a section, that means halfway up the section.
Uh, three quarters mile up from, uh, hundred and fifty street.
Yes.
Three quarters of a mile up.
Well, who'd ever thought in nineteen thirty eight, this is gonna cause problems?
You're still under something that Paul Larson didn't wanna give over.
Probably not.
On the west side.
Probably not.
Farm grounds or grassland, whatever it is.
Yeah, we can't just wave our magic wand and make it happen.
Right.
Well, actually, you did nineteen thirty eight. Really?
Survey.
No, the survey's already done.
But we'd be acquiring it.
Yeah.
From you, so we need additional pins, cause you get pins at forty for a right of way. Where we'd be only getting thirty three.
Yeah.
And then if we grant this, then next week, Paul comes in and presents his. Argument as to why it shouldn't be done or.
Good, could be, he could say that he's not gonna sell.
But you don't, excuse me, an easement isn't selling.
No.
No, no, you don't own the property.
We'd be purchasing. From him, he's not gonna give it up willingly. It's still gonna cause the county.
Yeah, yeah.
Most easements we.
They always pay for easements.
Yeah.
At least we do when we do bridge projects and stuff.
The one coming up to the forty foot or the four hundred and ten foot was a dollar. So, so and the, the other one, which is surprising, it didn't stop at the farm, the one that with the air, actually, as you read it in. It went clear up to the. Now, half, the field, I mean, it went up to the top of the, you know.
Cause it skipped from the half mile to the three quarter line. It was a three quarter ground.
Right.
Yeah. No, it would quit, actually Beacon didn't have it right either, which.
Right.
I mean.
Beacon was wrong.
Beacon was wrong because actually not only did it just go to that mailbox. If you read the uh, uh. The recorders, the actual easement, it went clear to the uh, uh section line.
Which even on Beacon, it says, this is not gonna be taken legally.
Right, there's.
Must be researched.
Yeah, yeah, you click on it, it'll be pop up shows and.
Well, the situation we're in, Paul, we went through the same exact thing two years ago on another road. On Kentucky. And we've stuck to our math. And I think we have to follow our. Precedent, so we can't.
Cause once you change, and that's, that's what I was gonna bring up, once you change a precedent, then you, you've changed it from now until.
I mean, I, I really understand your situation where your tractor's up in the yard.
Yeah.
And you drive up there and square forward, no one, and you gotta open up the lane.
Yeah.
You could offer an easement to Paul Larson. I mean. The one that's air was for, of course, it went a full quarter mile, not just this four hundred feet, was eighty dollars in nineteen thirty eight, thirty nine. He, actually, he isn't gonna lose that much far, well, I guess, you know.
It loses a few rolls.
What?
It loses a few rolls.
A few rolls, yeah.
I see what you're up to there.
Cause I know down the road, some days property's gonna come back. When the property sells.
Right.
If it ever sells. Cause that's why the issue was created out in Kentucky, cause the property sold and.
Yeah.
And they, you know, and when.
The farm on the west has been sold many times. Yeah.
Well, the, through all the discussion to wrap it up, and it seems like to gain the permanent easement would be the correct way to do it.
Either that or stick where the lane ends now.
Or just go with where the right away ends now.
And. And your other options would be to hire a neighbor to go clean your driveway out. I mean, that's.
That's what we do.
That's, that's the other option.
Well, once you, you know. If that's the way you're gonna go, you know, and it's an agendized item. Uh, uh, well, one other thing I wanted to, that this letter that you all got. Uh, it, it said, we decided, now, who was the we on the bottom of your letter there? Did you have a meeting on this already?
No, no, I didn't know about it until I ran in.
We. Court house and secondary roads.
Okay, cause it wasn't signed.
I, I don't speak on behalf of the board.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't discussed before.
Well, he just gave me the heads up that you're coming in to talk about.
Okay.
Your road, your lane.
Well, it sounds like that probably nothing's gonna be done, so with my authority that on for ownership, I don't want your equipment. Our road. So.
Neither.
Yeah, well, it's your problem how to figure out how to, and there's cameras there, so. Yeah, and then on their field that you went in without her permission. I'd like you to level that back off. And then not go into our field.
I'm sure Ben can have that taken care of.
Well, is anybody gonna explore the actual easement of the dislance that they're.
I mean, you could have a conversation with Paul Larson, come back to us if you want. I can ask him, that would, that'd be an option.
Yeah. You can't do a half of it, you know, property line easement, I mean, the road, actually, the gravel part is on our property, it isn't on Paul Larson's.
Uh, yeah, you can see it right in the pictures there, it shifts over.
Yeah.
But I, I, I do think that. The easiest thing is to hire someone to clean your driveway when you need to go out there, because. Oh, we just cannot set, change our past practices.
Right.
We'd love to help you out, but I just can't do it. We gotta, we gotta stick to our.
There's too many places of that, that would affect and then.
Mm-hmm, I thought this has little certain differences than because.
Oh, it, they everything, yeah, like you say, because of the past history of it, it's.
The past history and there's nowhere to turn around at this point. Uh, but that's not. My problem, I guess, that's the county's problem to find a place to.
Yeah.
Back up or to the.
Seems like trying to establish a easement would be the. Permanent better solution.
And like, like I said, the county's not out looking to gain more roads, that's, we definitely don't want that as a.
Yeah, nineteen thirty eight they did, but.
I know.
That's thirty eight.
Any more request by the property owner, that wasn't a request by secondary roads, that was the gal that lived on that acreage. That was requested.
No, I was talking on the west side. But, okay. So is there gonna, beans, it was an agenda item, if they're going to be a motion.
It was the discussion, it didn't say it's discussion action, we'll just discuss.
Yeah, this is discussion.
So could be tabled.
If you can bring it back to us.
I, if you have. The discussion led towards easement.
Right.
That's where I say you end up, we don't have anything to act on because we don't have anything in front of us to. Grant easement, but I think that sounds like the direction, Paul.
Okay, otherwise it's a discussion slash action.
Thanks for coming in and following up with that. Side of the story.
Yep.
And it's a very confusing story.
Yeah, especially with that air.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking through the recorded books and a lot of it's handwritten. And, and some of the nines look like threes and, you know, it's. And some of the images on the internet didn't come out very good, I have to admit that, it's nice that I can look at it on the internet. But I think some of it needs to be redone, to be honest with you, it's, it's whited out and. And stuff, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So where is the? Veterans affair.
You go. On a wastewater.
I know, I saw that, it's eight fifty, oh wait, oh, that's right. I'm looking at the clock running, I have my wrong glasses on, how's that? I always thought it was a comedian, but evidently I'm not. Okay. So, um. It brought this about. I'm curious. This was brought. Your attention by me. Um, Pocahontas. That we did not have anything on file. For an ordinance for this matter and. That we should probably do so, and it's been seen by John Fading. So do we have to set hearing? Yeah.
Yeah, through hearing dates and.
Okay.
Maybe.
Gives people.
All right, you're gonna come to one of the meetings and kind of talk about it a little bit more, I think.
This is an ordinance that was not in. The ordinance now. On this, what to do with the. Wastewire that goes bad, the septic system would have gone bad, I guess we've got a little problem in the county at some place. That uh. They don't wanna, they wanna hook into a hog setup sanitary or.
Okay.
There's something there and he's trying to get them to put a regular one in. And this is part of it, is this part in the ordinance.
Okay, I saw it here on Board of Health, I'm assuming you've heard, heard all about this. Okay. So what action do we need to take, is if we got every hearing now that.
Well, we're gonna, it'll have to be published, right?
Yeah.
So let's see, is it, what's the date or timeframe for putting it on, back on the agenda and in between there, we can have him come and.
Plus, I'm wondering, I mean, what action, that's what I'm trying to think, cause we have to have a hearing, just to set the hearing.
Got a hearing day.
For twenty days from now, probably, yeah.
They can publish it. Then we bring it back, it'll put on the agenda.
And will Nate be here for that?
I can request it, yeah.
I would, I mean, I would think he should be here.
Yeah, yeah.
It's twenty days. We set it for the twenty seventh. Yeah, it would have to be the sixth of March. Right? And I, we could have him in the paper.
Well, if you went on the twenty seventh, it'd be twenty one days, wouldn't it?
Well. Not since it's been published.
Yeah, it's not gonna get published till the night, night, right?
Ken's gonna make a mess out of that, so we're gonna go to the states.
You're, you're bound up to the deadline, right? Sixteenth, then you talk about twenty days from that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should. You think we should move it to the thirteenth of March, is what you're saying?
That's safe.
That's, yeah, we wanna be safe, cause we don't miss it, then we have a problem.
And in between there, we'll just have him come over and. If, if there's any updating that he needs to tell us about.
All right. I'll make a motion to set the hearing date for nine o'clock on March thirteenth for ordinance number seventy five for on-site water waste.
Second. Here, March thirteenth.
It's thirteenth, okay.
I won't be here.
You won't be here either?
I won't be here.
I possibly might not be here.
Well, good thing we brought that up.
Dave, you know, you wanna play, you and I can do it.
I'll be there. I guarantee, I guarantee I would wanna be here for that on the third game.
I could be in the airplane, so I can't even zoom.
I know, I know.
Go to twentieth.
Go to the twentieth.
But we send that and make it the twenty.
I will change my motion to make it the twentieth.
Okay.
Due to scheduling.
Twentieth of March, nine.
Nine o'clock.
Okay, I second twentieth of March, nine o'clock for the public hearing on ordinance number seventy five.
I'd be able to zoom, I just won't be able to.
That's.
That'll be fine.
That's fine.
We'll just be dating, I wouldn't.
Take a date there, but.
They will bring treats, you and I'll just sit here. Get all the sugar dough.
Hey, I'll even provide the treats, how's that?
You're doing nine AM, right?
Nine AM. Five, okay, so we have a motion and a second to have the hearing on ordinance number twenty five at ninety five. Seventy five, my God, I gotta get, I.
Bad glasses.
I know, I am going to the eye doctor on Thursday for my eyes, and I think I really need it.
Seventy five.
Seventy five at nine AM. Exactly, all those in favor.
All right.
Unanimous motion carries. I didn't think I needed that bad, but I did say it too. Okay, um. All right, um. All right.
Order the report for the veteran.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't, it's still buried on, okay. Well, Dave, anything? That, uh, the ordinary or anything?
Nope. About the same clients. Because one lose one. Otherwise, so I'll make a motion to accept and place on file the board of your report for the BA.
I'll second that.
Give you a motion and a second, all those in favor. Unanimous motion carries. All right. Committee reports. What, I know it's not in order, but. Paul had a question for you guys to on. Request for the budget. Do we wanna do that later? Yes.
You can do it on a work session.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, let's see, one thirtieth. Down will be A to prove the claims. Thursday, the second, went to the ISAC in Des Moines. Yesterday, uh, they were to the animal shelter fundraiser. They done very, very, very well.
Good.
Had a great time, place was packed.
Awesome. It's great.
That's all I have.
Evidently, I didn't win my half hog.
Yeah.
I didn't hear your name.
I think the neighbor, your neighbor won one.
Oh, yeah. She did.
Yeah, oh yeah, she did.
Who's she?
Next door to.
Tracy?
Tracy.
Wood figures.
Yeah. She come over from Burbank.
There you go, good for her.
She had a lot of. Donations give to them and. Everything went well.
Awesome.
Good.
They ran out of, they had meat left, but they ran out of the beans and potatoes.
All right, on Wednesday. Um, there was a Zoom presentation with the uh. Uh, Snyder Company, the Geo Permits. Tended that, and all some folks were here at the courthouse, but it was all on Zoom, that was very interesting. Um, went to that Wednesday morning. Then on Thursday. Sandy did an excellent job of driving Dave and I down to the statewide supervisors meeting. So we enjoyed the day and coming back, and that was a good trip and a pretty good, uh, pretty good conference.
Yeah.
Then on.
Yeah.
Uh, Friday, had another. Uh, Zoom presentation. For permitting process, that was eleven o'clock Friday morning. Uh, with the other company, which you page my name or my name, but debates me right now.
I won't work.
I worked something, I will work. I worked, I worked. I worked Zoom presentation, also very informative, very good. And that was the permitting process demonstration as well, that quite a few people attended uh Zoom and some in person, so that was my three things that official electric corrected and stuff last week.
All right, so. Wednesday, I had to sign checks for IDDA. Uh, Thursday, I went down to Des Moines with the ISAC thing. And it was. A lot of talk about the carbon pipelines, we probably dominated the whole session. And eminent remaining, which.
Yeah.
That's a pretty hot topic. Uh, and then in the afternoon, I left that meeting, went over to the other side of Des Moines for the IG HCP for health insurance. Tended that on Thursday afternoon and on Friday morning. And then on Sunday, I was at the fundraiser, going off at animal shelter, and I gave, so that was a huge success. I was. Surprised. Very, very surprised how good it turned out, they had these really nice, the community to come out and support them. I think a lot of people from quite a ways away came even, because there was a lot of people there I hadn't seen before.
Yeah, no. Okay, on the first, um, I attended the Schneider Geo. On the second, I went to the Iowa statewide supervisor meeting in Des Moines. And then on, um. Friday, I had a whole day, we had a meeting, um. Dean, I and, um. Uh, John, we met with Denise Johnson. And then, um, uh, after that, we went, I went to the I work. Discussion. So I did. Okay. All right, all right, so we get committee reports done, all right, so we need a. A motion to go into closed session.
Can I ask for a short recess first?
Yes, we can, have a short recess. Okay. We can call him whenever you like. Oh, okay, he just gave me a number, he's not gonna be in person, we're just gonna call him.
Well, that okay to.